Being here for this board meeting, and at this time I'd like to call me to order. And if you would, join me for a moment's silence, and if you do, would you please remember your thoughts and prayers, the principal at Lancaster Elementary School, Tracy Bogdan's mother, who passed away on this day that's going on tonight, and her funeral is going to be tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you very much. If you stand, please, if you'll join me, we pledge the flag of the United States of America, and the civil republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Lady Stevens. I had a seen Mr. Dr. Agenda. Talking without too good relation, thank you. Mr. Perry, make the most. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. First second, all in favor, let be known by the hand. All board members, did you raise your hand? I'm sorry, I didn't see. All board members were in favor, the agenda is adopted. Under item two, we have communications. And again, one of our favorite parts of our, the board meetings are these recognitions. And Mr. Perry, would you guide us through each one of these?
Happy to. Our first recognition tonight is the Danville Office Equipment Support Staff Person of the Month, and that is Ms. Tammy Ellis from Deer County High School. Tammy has a servant's heart. She's always ready to serve our student body, our faculty, and our parents. She always has a smile on her face and goes above and beyond. She sacrifices her time to make sure our athletes and our coaches have access to the things they need. She's always ready to help and never complains about any task she is given. She is the heartbeat of the school, and we're very thankful for her service, her smile, and her positivity. Our next recognition is Garrett County Schools and Whole Lot They Love Teacher of the Month. And our Teacher of the Month this month is Beth Trimble from Lancaster Elementary. Ms. Trimble is one of those teachers that you can honestly say goes above and beyond what you expect a teacher to do for the students in the school. She is involved in all aspects of day-to-day activities, plus extracurricular activities as well. She's a veteran teacher that her peers look to for leadership. She serves as the lead science teacher in our building and serves on the SBDM committee and leads her grade group. For many years, she's helped coach our academic team, leading the problem, a future problem-solving team, and assisting with quick recall. She's an outstanding science teacher, but when she was asked to move grades and teach math, she was willing to do so. Ms. Trimble's a great team member, and LES wouldn't know what to do without her. Thank you, Ms. Trimble, for all that you did. Next is our Farmers National Bank Students of the Month. We'll begin with CDR. And our CDR student is Brody Spencer. Brody is the CDR Student of the Month. He's a fantastic student and friend. He's grown so much this year. He is so excited about learning how to read and works very hard on his作业. He's doing fantastic with math, too. He's such a positive student, and we're so incredibly proud of his hard work and great attitude. We are so thankful that he is the CDR Bobcat. Next are our students from Lancaster Elementary. Hopefully, we have two here tonight, one from last month and one from this month. Our first recognition is Harmony Stolberg. So we'll try to catch Harmony the next go-around. Next is Rye Ross. So I guess we swung and missed twice. That's right. That's okay. So one of the things we had missing a few minutes ago was our connection to Whole Lot They Love. So if you don't care to step back up just for a second, Ms. Trimble? This is a good reason to step back up. From Paint Lick, we were hopeful of having two here. I think one of those individuals is not able to be here as well. So let's move to our second one, and that's Leah Akers, fifth-grade student at Paint Lick. Leah is a student who consistently goes above and beyond. She's always willing to try new things and challenges herself. Leah is also a kind spirit. She always sees the best in people and never fails to lend a helping hand to others. She is truly a great student to have in class. Congratulations, Leah. Next from Garrett Middle School is Alex Hounshill. Alex is an eighth-grade student, and he's an amazing young man. He's always ready to work in class and help his classmates. Alex contributes meaningfully to his science class and is constantly striving to learn more. His inquisitive nature is only matched by his caring and compassionate attitude. Alex is simply a joy to have in class. Congratulations to Alex. From Garrett County High School, Madison Banta. Okay. And from Eric County High School, Rain Vigaski. Rain is a 10th-grade student and is a very hard-working student. He always has a smile on his face and loves to assist others. Rain makes it a point to be helpful and looks out for his classmates. He demonstrates the GCHS core characteristics of leadership, integrity, ownership, no excuses, and self-control. Thank you, Rain, for always smiling and serving others. Congratulations on being Student of the Month.
All right, fellow board members. Item B is the site-based decision-making minutes. We have the album from Paint Dick Robinson, Lancaster Elementary, and Garrett County High School. Okay, we didn't have any from Paint Lick or the middle school. I hope you've had enough to look those over. You went on our board member portal. And item C is the audience comments. Do we have anyone?
We did not receive any requests.
Okay. Board members?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I would like to, at this time, we've had a very busy last couple of years. Somewhere, it seems there's always been fighting a fire here and a fire there, but we have some things that I think are impressive and we need to look at in the academic side. And I would like to put a board chair meeting or in a regular meeting, whichever, to look at some particular items that I think is important. Now, I think we need to know where we stand so we know whether we need to improve, what were we need to improve in our academics of the academic. And some of the particular points will be our pathways program that we have, our ROTC program, and there seems to be one more. Last week, I guess I can blame it on my age. But, and in general, our test scores and what our graduation tests show as far as our grades that we, how we're performing in the grades that we test out as our reading levels and the levels on that, and our schools individually are performing. So I respectfully request that we set some time to look at those, because I know with COVID, those are things that have been pressing here lately, and then we have a lot of time we're going to have to allocate to this building. I know it's pressing, but we haven't been allocated on some of it in a thorough fashion. And I think the superintendent has been diligent, but there's just, you know, there may be some questions we need to ask and look at and see if we can improve some progress that from outward appearance may not be doing as well. I know I looked at the national poll the other day, and it was very disturbing. Kentucky education falls in the bottom 30% of the nation. And now, you also realize that a poll will tell you whatever you want it to tell you, depending on the way you ask the questions, what questions you ask. So that's only one poll. And I'm sure that there are other polls that may show a different story, but I would like to feel more assured as board members here at Garrett County that our district is performing at a much higher level than that.
Like, do you make another lead?
I have, yes, sir.
And I get that agenda. Thank you for sharing. Any other board members? All right, if there is none, the next we go to item E. And on the superintendent, do you have any instruction or program?
So we appreciate what Mr. Perry just said. One of the things we have scheduled for tonight is to share some information with you around instruction. And one of the things that we'll be adding back now that we feel like we've accomplished surviving the world of COVID is, as you all used to travel to schools, you got to care about individual schools. We plan to bring those folks back to you. We talked to our principals about that this week. We anticipate next month you having three elementaries here to share with you. The following month, you'll have middle school, high school, and the ATC to talk to you about that. And as we move into next year, we'll be able to do individual schools. But today, we wanted to give you a high-level look at a couple of things. So Ms. Perry is here to share some information that will touch on some of the things that you asked about. On your desk right now is information about money that you've allocated to purposes connected to education over the last 18 months. On the front side, you'll find ESAR information. On the backside, you'll find general fund information. We've provided that for you to take a look at. We'll also be writing a video here for a second to show you some of the things that are going on in the school. We think it's appropriate for you to ask the question about instruction. We appreciate you doing that. Dr. Lamb asked about that in a meeting the other day, too, so we appreciate both of you doing that. And it's always good for us to get back to that. One of the things that we'll be sharing with you today is something that we really couldn't have talked clearly about last year because of COVID. And so we appreciate your interest in that, and we hope we give you some good information tonight, and that we'll continue to do that. Where you see listed under the superintendent's comments with the instructional program, you'll see that there on a reoccurring basis. Okay? Et cetera. Ms. Perry? I'll get this going while you're talking.
All right. Well, the part that I'm going to share with you, I like the video part. So do we want to watch the video just a second, and then we'll?
Can if you want to.
Okay. Well, all right, I'll just roll. But, so the list that you have in front of you of all the purchases that you all have allowed us to make over the last year with our money, with our ESAR money, and then with the district money, have made a huge difference. And so what we've done with that is we've set up a timeline for implementation for the different materials that we've purchased, because we purchased new math materials district-wide for K through five, and then for six through eight. And then we purchased science materials for K through eight that we, that we did the training on this year and implemented this year. So those are the things that we mainly have been focusing on this year, because we felt like we needed a timeline and not to do all the curriculum areas at one time. And so next year, the implementation will be focused on our new ELA program for reading and writing and our new social studies program. So we didn't want to overwhelm teachers with all of the training for everything at one time, so we've created a timeline. of the training for everything at one time. So we've created a timeline, and then we'll have a six-year cycle so that we'll have time to implement and really stick with programs and make them work, you know, make sure that they work and that we give them a fair shot to impact all of our students before we implement something new. You know, we always, we want to give things time to really work. But anyways, okay, I need to move along a little bit quicker than that. But the programs that we chose were picked out or were chosen by our teacher leaders with input from the teachers in their buildings. So since we decided to do this district-wide, we wanted the teacher leaders to be the ones who made these decisions for us. So this year, we have also, because we're trying to make up for the time that we were away from in-person instruction, we've had a lot of catching up to do. And we know that that's not going to be an overnight kind of a fix. And so we need to be really efficient and intentional with our time and with the instruction that we're providing. So we have, we've done a lot of testing with our students. We've done FERGANS testing, reading level testing, the SNAP assessments for all of the math to find out where our kindergarteners and first graders and second graders are exactly so that we know what they need. Because we don't have any time to waste. So we need to make sure that we're getting them right where they are and making that accelerated progress with them. At the high school, we've done some ACT practice tests. We've done USA test prep. We've had an organization that's been working with our kids called Torch Prep. And they really focus on ACT skills because we know that ACT is going to determine the type of funding that they can get to help them get through college as far as scholarships and things like that. And so we've been working with Torch Prep this year, and that we're really excited about that, too. We've been doing our I-Ready testing and then just our classroom assessments, just, you know, daily, weekly, monthly classroom assessments to see where we are and what needs to happen next. And then we also have, the teachers have been doing intentional planning. We have PLCs. You know, Dr. Lamb and I were talking about this the other night. And even though we haven't been talking to you guys about this, because you all have been doing a lot of other things related to COVID and building projects and all that, but we haven't been talking to you all about the academic side. And but that's all we talk about. You know, those of us who love to talk about instruction, that's all we talk about, is where the kids are and the growth that they're making and, you know, and what we need, you know, what holes we still need to fill. And so we have PLCs, content grade levels, specific meetings. We've got vertical alignment meetings. We've got our district teacher leader meetings. And then we've got RTI meetings where we're looking at each individual student, seeing what we need to do for that kiddo if they're not making the growth that we would have projected. Some of the things that we've noticed are that, like in our I-Ready testing, we began the year, and I'll give you access to all of this so that you can look at the actual numbers and data. But at the beginning of the school year, K through eight for I-Ready, we only had 22% of our students who were on grade level, you know, right where they needed to be when the school year began. And we have increased that to 36%. So that's gone a lot. We had 36% of our kids were two or more levels behind when the school year began, and we've decreased that to 28%, which is still too many. But we're making great gains. But what that means is, right now, we've got 72% of our kids, K through eight in reading, who are within one grade level of where they need to be, you know. And we can easily bring those kiddos up that are on that, you know, that are right there on the cusp. And then we've, you know, got to do really targeted work with our kiddos who are farther behind. And that sounds like it's not huge growth when you talk about it in percentages. So I pulled out the actual numbers. What that means is that we've got 159 students who are no longer two or more levels behind and are now within one grade level of being on grade level in reading. So that's, you know, 159 kids that have already come that far up. We've got 211 students who are now on grade level who began the year a year or more behind. So it's not going to be overnight, but the teachers and the kids are working so hard, and the principals and our leaders and interventionists. So that's in reading. And then in math, math was even harder for us when, you know, because parents had an easier time reading with their kids when they were home over COVID, you know, over that time. Math was a lot harder for them to do because they didn't have all the manipulatives at their houses and all that kind of stuff. So we only had 11% of our students who were on grade level to begin the year this year, K through eight. And we had 20, or I'm sorry, 37% of our kids who were two or more grade levels below. So that was a lot, you know, and we have made great growth. We now have 26% who are on or above and 48% who are only one grade level below or within that. So 74% of our kids are now either on grade level or just within that one, you know, one level, you know. So those are all of our kiddos that are easily going to make it by the end of the year to where we need for them to be. And then we've got 26% that we're still working our tails off because they're still two or more grade levels behind. But we know that. This is nationwide. You know, this is the way it is right now. We're, you know, we're all playing catch-up. And that's why the COVID money or the ESER funds that we've had, we're so grateful to you because you have helped us put our math interventionists in place and we've had all of the materials that we need for our kids. Anything that we can possibly do to support our kids, now's the time. So we've purchased, you know, all the programs that we purchased. They have all the materials that they need, and the teachers are very, very grateful. With our math highlights, there are now 179 students who are no longer two or more grade levels behind. So that's 179 kids that we pulled up and 248 who are now on grade level, who were before this at least one level behind, and now they're on grade level. So if you see teachers and kids say, you know, thank you for all of your hard work. We appreciate you because they're working really hard. At the high school, we have not been, we haven't gotten to give the real, the state ACT yet this year. But our high school kids, when they took the practice ACT, their freshman year, they were at a 15.16. And now, in the fall, they took another official test. Our juniors took an official ACT. It's not the one that counts for the state, but it's the real ACT. And they had a 17.23 composite, which is much better than last year, even though it's not where we want to be yet because we're not back up to our, to the 20 that we have as our goal. You know, that's where we want to be. But they will take it again this spring. So we're really excited to see where they are after being at a 17.23 in the fall, where they'll be in March after everything the high school has put in place. But do you all have any questions that you want me to answer? I was just trying to give you a brief overview. And then, like Mr. Stell said, in the next two meetings, we'll share with you more from elementary and then middle and high. And I know that the high school's going to want to answer your pathway question because they've been rocking and rolling pathways. Now is the time that they're doing all their testing, and they are really excited.
Be a good opportunity to refresh my memory and give me a little bit better understanding of how that works.
Okay. Yes, they'll love telling you about it.
Either I knew and forgot, which is no excuse, or I just never really caught it of how the trimester works, what's required.
Right.
Is fresh levels. How many, how many true electives do they have? How much is, how much does a student going into their junior year have a choice in what they take? Or is it all pathwayed out for a pathway that started when they were in the sixth, seventh, eighth grade? It's kind of hard to say that an eighth grader, although they are incredibly smart. And if you don't believe me, ask one of them, and they'll tell you.
Yes, they are. They're very smart.
But if they can decide what they want to do at that time and then be locked in to a pathway, and what's the opportunities for switching? Are they locked in? I don't know that. I'd like to find out and why. Because you're going to have, I'd like to see more electives where they can choose personally as they change their minds about what they want to do, which when I was in high school, I changed my mind four or five times. That was, could have been me. But do they have space to do that? Or are they locked into, well, you have so many required subjects that you had to take to graduate? And then you have so many required subjects you got to, to stay on the pathway. So required here and required here. How much is left over here for fun things that I'd really like to do that I get credit for because they're electives and that's what they're, you know,
Right.
what they're for.
I'm sure they'll enjoy telling us.
And when we change, when things come up and change, how much of heads up do we give them? I know we're doing pathways now, and they're choosing some things or they're being informed what they need, what's changed from what they thought they were going to take and what they ended up going to have to take. And I'm not sure that somebody in wanting to go into geology, anthropology, something in that field, although it's an excellent pathway, I'm not, I'm not sure that a passion design is something that might be very useful in their pathway, but it might be something they, they're assigned to take. So I just have a serious question about, is it more for the students' benefit or is it more a benefit for scheduling classes and moving numbers around to make sure that everybody has a full classroom or nobody ends up not enough to have a position? You know, and I think it's a fair question. I'm being asked that of parents. And I thought I'd pass it along, and maybe I could learn something and answer some of the questions that I haven't been able to answer. Because all I can tell them, I don't, we don't, that's not a good action.
Well, we will definitely look into it.
Thank you. I appreciate it so much. And I appreciate the hard work that you put into this.
Well, thank you.
And you?
Mr. Stell, did I forget? I know I forget. We forgot the same.
So Ms. Perry said this a second ago, and we certainly want to thank you all for the amount of opportunities that you're providing for our staff, for our students. And that's why we want to make sure that we bring this back to you so that you're talking about it on a monthly basis, so you can get a chance to see what's occurring with that. So some of the questions that Mr. Perry asked will be able to be addressed very easily by the high school when they, when they share with that. You ask questions about the trimester, and you'll find that because of that, it's given kids a lot of opportunities they couldn't have before. I don't think I'll misspeak when I say this, but Mr. Anderson has available for students the opportunity to do two pathways if they wanted to. That's the kind of flexibility that they have. So if they choose one, then they could do tons of other things. They could probably even manipulate it in such a fashion that they could do three pathways. So that suggests that not only can they do that, but many other things along the way. And they'll do a much better job promoting that than what I'm doing tonight. So we look forward to hearing that. We look forward to next month for you all to hear from our elementaries together. Because one of the things that we're working very hard to do is make sure that we have a district-wide curriculum when it comes to our elementary students so that we have a pathway academically to a same conversation when they arrive at the middle school. And so I don't know that we've ever had that type of presentation before where we bring all three together. So we're going to do that. The other thing that we're going to do with your all's permission is we're going to back up to the teacher, I mean, the student of the month. Because we had another student who was able to get here, and we don't want to miss that opportunity.
No.
To recognize her. So if everybody will indulge us on that, we'll take advantage.
Glad to.
So at this time, we'd like to recognize from LES, Briar Ross.
Briar's a first-grade student at LES, and she is the ideal student that you genuinely enjoy having in your classroom from the start of the day until the end. She's always a delight, is a delight, and is never in a bad mood. She tries hard no matter what task she is given and exhibits pure perseverance. However, not only is she a very studious student, but she also has a genuinely beautiful heart. She worries about her fellow classmates and wants to help everyone and anyone. She has always, in first, wanted to help another student clean up a mess or lend them a pencil. I can't think of a student that's more deserving than Briar. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have some personnel changes. Do you want to share those?
So we share those with you each month. You have access to those. We'll always continue to update you on that. And if it's okay, we'll move on to our third report from me, and that will be a presentation about our audit from 2020, 2021 year. Our folks from, our friends from Patrick's and Associates are going to share with you. You have a copy of the audit. For those in the, in the audience, you have access, if you log onto our site, to see that in a digital format as well. So we'll turn it over to you guys.
Good evening. How are you all today? We were glad to be here. This is Beth Francis, and I'm Tammy Patrick, and I've worked in governmental accounting and auditing for many, many years. And I worked with you all last year and came back this year and started back in the fall. A couple of, we had a really good game plan. Everything scheduled out, and COVID hit again, and we were, can't go there, can't go here. We were just in, but every school board that we worked with, and every other entity was great about scheduling. Just as we call it, kind of pivot here and there and try to get the work done. And we are, like I say, glad to be here and to work with the board and work with Mrs. Coffey and Superintendent Stell and Mrs. Coffey's staff. The finals, they're great, very cooperative, always very professional. Anything that we requested, they were more than willing and very efficient and effective, giving us the information that we needed to complete the audit in an efficient manner. Documentation, even with COVID and everything that y'all have gone through, I know everybody's wall was kind of turned upside down the last, I guess, two years almost now. But just seeing that those internal controls and the mechanisms that are there and the policies and procedures were followed, even though during the times we were all operating, no issues were noted in regard to the financial statements or your major federal programs, in regard to internal controls or compliance matters, we had no issues there. Y'all have a copy of the report. It's pretty, it is pretty, because on page two, you have an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that you can get. There were no issues listed related to internal control, internal control or compliance in the report. There is an emphasis on matter paragraph in the report this year, and that is for the implementation of GAZI 87, which is a governmental accounting standards board requirement, where you had to move your student activity funds from being a fiduciary-type fund into actually a special rep. So that was a change there. We're just required by auditing standards to disclose that as an emphasis on matter paragraph in the report. So it's nothing that the majority of schools implemented this year. Some people had implemented earlier, early last year. But that's just a standard requirement. There's nothing to be alarmed about. It's just required. So overall, the net position increase, I think, and your general fund balance increase, I think, again, with everything that you all have been charged with and keeping up with and doing, allowing, as she spoke about, the extra programs and things of that nature, I think you should be very proud, very, very, I think the word has been a long day. Pleased with the results of the audit, which we didn't expect anything but. So based on our private experience, we all appreciate yourself. With that, I'll ask her, are there any questions from the board? No questions?
Okay.
Told you. I told you about you with that, too.
We appreciate your time. We're glad we could come tonight. Been working in a basement all day. It's been about 1,000 degrees.
It's literally hot.
And then we have about an hour trip to get here in the pouring rain. I still, oh, it's been a long day. So we will probably exit if that's okay for you all.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, it's storming out there. You all have to go to Manchester.
Yes.
Did you all come up with any questions? I mean, kind of just, Stacy has our contact question. Let us know. Feel free to reach out.
Well, I told them before the meeting when they, when they came in that I went on the portal and, and pulled this up and I had to confess I didn't read every word of it and they said, why not?
I said, I know I could read it tonight and you need to get ready for me. Just wind it up and, and.
Thank you all so much. God save.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, the board members, Mr. Stoll, item three is reports and, uh, first we now the treasurer board, uh, it all gives an opportunity with Miss Coffee. Okay. And then, uh, bond potential update.
Each month, we're receiving a, a bonding potential update from Baird. And I shared with you, each of you the other day that there had been a decline in the bonding potential and again, we had anticipated that this would occur, uh, so there's not a surprise with that at this point. We'll continue to update you on that as it occurs. We did receive some good information today, uh, from Baird Financial. They're going to sell the funds, uh, today and it locked in at two point zero five, which is significantly better than what we're seeing there. That doesn't mean anything for us. It's just an optimistic thing, uh, to, to keep in mind. These numbers mean nothing until we arrive at that spot. And that's when we'll find out what our real bonding is. This is just your potential, so we'll continue to make you aware of that on a, on a monthly basis.
Thank you, sir. And item C is bills as presented.
You receive those on a weekly basis, then we collect all of those for the February billings and put those in this so that anyone who would like to take a deep look can do so.
Thank you, sir. All right, item four is a consent agenda and I hope that all board members have had an opportunity to look over the consent agenda. If there is no question about anything on the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, adopt the consent agenda.
So move.
Okay, Mr. Earp moved, I have a second.
A second.
Okay, Ms. Davis seconded. Any comments, paying for them? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. And all board members were in favor, the consent agenda is approved, which brings us to item five, the action agenda, and item A is approved, but tentative site-based decision making allocation for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Each year at this time, we're required by law to present to our, to our site-based councils, uh, a tentative allocation. You have had an opportunity to see those. We're asking you to approve that today. We will come back to you in April with our final allocations, which will be due to SBDM in May. So we're, we're complying with what we're supposed to. At this point, we have maintained numbers moving forward. It'll be one hundred and forty dollars per student, uh, which is the maximum that we can do for them. And last year, we gave each, uh, building an additional staff member. We've maintained that, we're not taking that back. Any increases beyond that would be based on attendance, uh, and enrollment increases. I think each of ours, uh, buildings are seeing a little bit of an increase there as well. So my recommendation is that you approve those tentative allocations.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Dr. Lamb, thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. Item A is approved. Item B is to approve creation of a student worker position for maintenance and food service.
So this happened a little bit quicker than we thought. We didn't share this with you on Friday when we met with you to prep you for today. But one of the things that we had been wanting to do for some time was actually create some student worker positions and hire students from the high school that would be part of their pathway, interestingly enough, uh, to help them be completers and finish some things of that nature. We'd like to request that you allow us to create five student worker positions in maintenance and five in food service. They would have to comply with all of the expectations of a co-op program based on KDE's plans and they'd have to comply with GCHS's requirements as well. To do this, that would be during the school day, uh, we anticipate that these are kids who could benefit us as a district and benefit themselves at the same time. We don't anticipate that we'll fill all of these positions, uh, in, in a first go. We have done some initial checking and we do have some interest and we believe at some point we'll come back to you and ask for some other student positions, uh, around this as well. I can't think of anything that would be more appropriate than for us to give students an opportunity to earn money, uh, while they're in school and support the community as well, uh, things that, that we'd like to see them do. We've spoken with, uh, our director of maintenance and our director of food services and they know that you're doing this tonight and they're on board with that. So my recommendation is that you approve five student internships or student worker positions in maintenance and five in food service.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Perry made a motion, do I have a second? Ms. Davis seconded. Uh, do you have any questions or comments? Do please.
This is a, a program that's quite good because a long time ago, back whenever I was working during the summers, uh, as I was teaching, uh, the federal government actually provided monies in order to provide for student workers, uh, during the summer and help to get the schools ready to start again and clean and do all the painting and everything. So there's a lot of skills, you know, we had, had people never painted before, learned how to paint, people never cleaned floors before, learned how to clean floors, but it's quite a good program. I'm glad to see that we're trying to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Earp. Mr. Perry, uh, I know we've had, we've had, well, as long as I can remember, we've had a program up until I retired the second time, that I've seen our students co-op in various places around town. I know, uh, when I was at Sheriff's Department, we had a co-op student. I think two that I can remember while I was in there, we had two co-op students and it worked out pretty well. So I, I don't have a problem with it, I just, uh, it doesn't happen. And my normal question is always when we're, we're starting a new program, how much does it cost?
So that's in front of you. If we run a student through all three trimesters, it'll be roughly four thousand dollars. If we filled all these positions, it'd be roughly forty thousand dollars to do all of that. We don't anticipate that that's what will happen at this point, uh, but if it does, we think we're okay financially to do this.
They can do things that need to be done as money will spend.
Our hope is that it helps in food service where they're struggling right now to get staff. We think this also will provide some assistance to, to Brad's staff when it comes to areas like weed eating and things of that nature.
Yeah, there are six, as best I understand, unless something has changed, six maintenance workers in district with this much.
Five.
Five. Well, Brad works as hard as, as anybody else, so he's really the sixth, but, uh, yeah, I thi, I think they could use some help and that'd be money will spend. Thanks, sir. Doctor Lamb?
I understand that we do have some positions already at the high school where the students are able to work in the offices. I just want to make sure that, um, so these positions would be funded from our general fund and I want to make sure that we're not creating some kind of disparity between these co-op students and the ones that we already have who work in the building now. Are those positions funded out of just general fund or are they, do they have to be funded out of site-based council funding?
So let me ask Mr. Anderson, are you paying any student workers at this time?
No, sir.
So those are simply students who were part of their schedule during the day who come in and are, and support the staff as part of an instructional day?
Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't creating a disparity here.
And I want to make sure I didn't tell you anything wrong. That's why I'm asking Mr. Anderson.
You need to be in a stable or something. It's, it's, is this Davis?
Well, Doctor Lamb, I just want to make sure where the funding is coming from, but real, there's nothing like real life experience, so I think this is a wonderful program and it's exciting to think it may expand.
Yeah, it might expand to the office workers.
Hopefully, first it is go into nursing and so, if there's anything new. Nursing, there's vast shortage of nurses also. All right, everybody done? Hopefully encourage them to, uh, learn the value of working for a dollar and help them in the long run. When, when you have to work for a dollar, it's a whole lot harder. And I know from my own children's, uh, personal experiences, it's a whole lot harder for them to spend their money than it is to spend mom and dad's money. That's right. All right, everybody, everybody done? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. The student worker positions for maintenance and food service is approved. Item C is to approve SRO contract with Lancaster Police Department and the city of Lancaster.
So we've been reviewing contracts that need to be renewed or to be changed. Uh, we've had a meeting with, uh, the Lancaster Police Department and Chief Kit. We currently pay them for, or we pay for four SROs and it's our recommendation that we continue that contract with them. There is a slight increase, uh, in the cost, uh, for that, but that's fairly understandable in the time in which we're living now. And so it's not an exceptional amount. We could add another position to this if we ever decided to and it would be at the same rate, uh, so there would be no increase to that individual's cost. There would be an increase to the total cost, it would be at the same rate that each individual would be currently receiving. So it's my recommendation that we renew, uh, this contract with the Lancaster Police Department and the city of Lancaster for four SROs.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Perry made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Doctor Lamb seconded, is any other discussion or questions? Yes, uh, these contracts are for the same period of time as the other contracts because I think they're not on a yearly basis or do.
We've allowed this one to run for potentially three years. You'll get a chance to reduce each year for up to three.
You know, try to be consistent and, and work with them to, where they can schedule it, figure out what they need and how, how they need to go about it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, we ready to vote? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor, uh, SRO contract with Lancaster Police Department is approved. Item D is to approve adjustment in adult lunch and breakfast prices.
While, yeah, while the district funds the, uh, students breakfast and lunch, you do not do that for adults, but we are still required to comply with all the expectations of the national school lunch program where we receive our reimbursements. And in order to do that, there is, uh, the need to do an increase. Currently, it's four dollars and sixty cents for lunch. We need to raise that to four dollars and eighty-five cents. Currently breakfast is two seventy-five, we need to raise that to two ninety. There's no excitement in doing that, but in order to comply and continue to receive the reimbursements that make it possible for us to do the things that we do, we need to ask you to do that. So it's my recommendation that you approve these increases.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Perry made a motion, do I have a second? Ms. Davis seconded, do you have any questions from any board member? Not all in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor, the new adjustments for lunch and breakfast is approved. Item D is to approve adding two point five hours to the current five-hour food service position that Lancaster Elementary took.
We have multiple positions, obviously, for, for food service at Lancaster Elementary. We have one that's a five-hour position. Just as a reminder, the Lancaster Elementary now caters, uh, for our students who are in Head Start Preschool in this building and that makes life much more challenging for them. So, uh, in meeting with, uh, Ms. Morrow, she recommended the idea of creating an additional two and a half hours for that contract. Hopefully that motivates other interest in the position, but it also allows them to more effectively complete their responsibility of doing the work here, but also taking care of the students who are at Lancaster. This would be funded, uh, through the, the food service program, so this is not a general fund request or anything of that nature. It's my recommendation, we add these two and a half hours and, and benefit our staff who's there and at the same time benefit our students.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Earp made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Doctor Lamb seconded, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor, the, uh, item E is approved. Item F is to approve, uh, board recognition criteria.
So last month, we, uh, gave you access to some possible board recognition criteria. Uh, the idea was just to establish, uh, a, a set of standards that you all would use when you wanted to recognize someone so that there would be no decision about should we or should we not. So we gave you that to look at. If you wanted to make recommendations of changes, we're more than happy to accommodate those. Uh, we're not suggesting that, that what we put in front of you was something that would be all inclusive. So if you've come up with recommendations you'd like to do that, we're happy to hear those, uh, but then we would encourage you to make a decision tonight, if at all possible, to have those recommendations. Codified is probably the wrong word, but we use it anyway, solidified so that we would know when someone, uh, in, in our district does something of recognition, this is the standard that we stand.
Thank you. If you, hope you all had time to, to look that over. I don't know of anyone, I didn't send them any additions or requests or anything, but good discussion started. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion? Mr. Perry made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis seconded. All right, do you have any questions or comments? Any board member?
I would just like to say that I don't think we should be locked in to only what's on this, uh, criteria list because we can't possibly imagine what might come before us to be recognized. And so I would just like to make that known that we're not locking ourselves in to only recognize what's identified on this list, but I think we should have the flexibility to acknowledge when something is extraordinary and deserves recognition and bring that board meeting for recognition if needed.
And I agree with that. If there's some way you could put an asterisk for some event or something that happens of uniqueness and worthy of recognition, then we have that ability to add.
So that's why we have the final bullet that says unique achievement accomplishment because you're a hundred percent right. We cannot, we cannot know for sure what could happen. And the reason I put the one example on there of American Idol, I'll be honest, if you had asked me, would we ever have an American Idol from Garrett County, I might have said no. We obviously did. Why would we not highlight that? And you did highlight that. So we wanted to use that one just as an example of how you may not anticipate, but you have that, that luxury. And so if something occurred, you would certainly be able to do that.
So are you comfortable that asterisk covering?
I'm, I'm happy with et cetera.
Et cetera.
Et cetera is a pretty strong asterisk. All right, anybody else? All right, we've had a motion, a second, discussion, all in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor, the board recognition criteria is approved. Item G is to approve the calendar amendment again.
Thank you for adding it again. None of us like the idea of having to do calendar amendments. Uh, we know that that becomes a challenge, not only for our students and our parents, but also for our staff members. We were trying to be very judicious and make sure that we didn't burn all of our NTI days. So we've had two days that were snow days. You addressed one of those in January, we need you to address another one. So we met with our principals and our leadership team to see how they would like to do that. They kind of gave Mr. Anderson, uh, free will. And I say that because one of the things that we were considering taking was the last Friday, uh, of the year, which is not a student day right now. That does make a challenge for high school principal. I'll speak from experience on that, when you try to have students in the building while you're graduating that night. So all of our other principals and leaders felt like that they were okay with supporting the high school in that manner. And so we're requesting that you move March the eighteenth, which was a staff day, to become a student day. We're also asking then that May thirty-first become the staff day, replacing that day from March eighteen. We did, uh, make comments and I want to be publicly, uh, clear about this, we did make comments to our principals that they can work with their staff around that, uh, May thirty-first. That's the day following Memorial Day, so that's coming off a three-day weekend and it would be challenging for some folks to be here because of things that they have scheduled. We'll allow our principals some flexibility to make that easier on our staff, but our principals will be there on the thirty-first and any staff member who says, I'm not worried about it and I'll be there on the thirty-first, that would be fine. So our staff will have some flexibility around that. So my recommendation is you approve these amendments.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'm going to be approving.
Ms. Davis made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Perry seconded. All right, do you have any questions or comments? Will, will the last Friday be graduation day?
As of right now, yes, sir. That is your anticipation.
The last Friday in May would be graduation day. Anybody else? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor, the calendar amendment. The calendar amendment is approved. Item H, approve geotechnical services for Garrett County High School final phase.
Last month, you allowed an RFP to go out requesting geotechnical services. That has come back. Recommendation that has come to us is that we select solid ground. I shared that contract with your board attorney. Your board attorney has said that they see no reason why you could not make that selection. It is the lowest bid. So that makes it even easier in most cases. So my recommendation to you is that you approve solid ground for the geotechnical services that are needed at the high school.
So you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Show move.
Mr. Hurst made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis, second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. Item H is approved. Item I is to approve BG1 for Garrett County High School final phase.
We were reminded by our architects last month that they would come to us asking for us to approve the first BG1 to initiate the work on the high school final phase. And we bring to you today that BG1. It is, has been added to a system known as Fact Pack. And so it is available for your review and anyone else's review. And you will notice as you go through that we have used the DFP that you all established as a 1A criteria. I'll also remind you that last week, the Kentucky Board of Education approved a waiver that allows you to use restricted funds on these discretionary projects. We were one of two districts that received that, and I think that that's probably the only ones. This, the total amount for this is $21,340,573. This has gone through a review by your fiscal agent. They say that these funds would be available. This has to go to KDE for approval. So your approval of this tonight does not finalize that. It has to go to KDE, and they would have to approve that. This is within the amount of money that you saw earlier for bonding potential. So you cannot place a higher amount of money on here than you currently can show. So while we anticipate in July having more money available, we would come back at the point that that money is available and ask you to potentially amend or revise this BG1. This BG1 can carry forward for all parts of the Garrett County High School project. We don't have to do a second BG1 at some point. We can make additions to that and move through. So when you start this project, this will be the BG1. Doesn't mean you have to revise it. It simply means you have the ability to do that. Shouldn't we go to any other projects in the district? That requires a different BG1. So I want to make sure that we're clear on that because I think there might have been a little misunderstanding last month about that. So I hope that I'm clarifying that in a spot that you understand. This only serves the high school project, and the high school project does not include the bus garage, even though it's part of the master plan. Your initial, not yours, but the board's initial facilities plan in 2015 included the completion of the high school. The addition of the bus garage on the master plan is something that I think you're all in favor of, but that would be a different BG1. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's...
Yes, sir. Would you rather have a motion?
Yeah, I'd rather have a motion and say, thank you.
Call for what?
Huh?
I'll be glad to wait.
Oh, you're not making a motion?
No.
Oh, all right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll answer questions.
Show move.
All right, Mr. Hurst, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis, second. All right, now we're open for discussion.
I appreciate the superintendent's explanation. That's the way I understood it. But tonight, if we approve this BG1, this BG1 is to spend... If you roll back to the top, it is to spend down just a little, please, from the top. No, there you go. This is a whole lot of, it is, or not actually building anything, but getting everything ready to build and/or doing great work to lay out athletic facilities. Basically, you're paying a lot of fees and which, we knew about that going in, so we knew that I had to pay them. It's a lot of money. But there's no major construction going on in this phase. In other words, we're not building a gym.
If I, if I...
This is going to be a large chunk of the money.
The BG1, what it's doing is proving to KDE that the district has the money to do a project. So that's all you're really proving here is sending up documents, just like you went to your banker and saying, here's how we suppose we're going to pay for it.
But it does lock us into the high school because it's a high school completion of Phase 1. Or the high school unmade...
Final phase.
Yep, final phase of high school. And it's, Mr. Stoll did clarify. Each one, each, each phase requires another BG1.
No, not on this.
Each location.
Not on this. But we're not locked in to saying that we're going to spend 40 some odd million. I don't know the exact figure. I can't remember. It moves around. It will move around because that's the nature of the beast. But we're spending all money that we have available on, on the high school. And nothing will be spent out of this bonding potential for any of the other buildings in the district.
Great, that's on the current BG1.
Under this, under this current plan. Yeah. As this money and if more money comes available, it can be changed to where that money could be directed. Say we have a disaster, God, we don't, but, and it becomes apparent that we need to build a new school. It's tornado season. You know, things you don't talk about and you hope to never happen, but they could happen. We could redirect money when more money comes available to something else, even though we have a final phase. Garrett County High School is our final phase on this initial one tonight.
Right.
But it would require, it would require some changes. I mean, we'd have to prove that at some point.
The terminology final phase is probably, it's a carryover from your district facility plan. And it was purposely used again to not run into any roadblocks at Department of Education because they change the name on something, then it gets them confused and stuff. We just, it was carried over for that purpose only. It obviously doesn't mean that it's the, quote-unquote, final phase of that school facility. 20 years from now, you do a renovation project. This obviously wasn't the final phase. There's another phase subsequent to it. So it's really a nomenclature aspect as far as what's on the documents. It doesn't prevent the board from changing what is actually bid, what's actually constructed at any point in time.
It is, money becomes available or when it becomes unavailable, then we'll have to adjust one way or the other.
You can adjust this multiple times. And just to build on what Dave was saying, if you look at your DFP, the DFP, when it says final phase, included classrooms and vocational classroom. We're not addressing everything in that, but this allows us to do anything on that DFP that's listed under the final phase. Anything on that list, we can pick and choose from without having to open up a new BG1. If you go off of that 1A1, then we have to open up a new BG1. So if you wanted to build a new high, new school, or you wanted to go Lancaster and do a project, then it becomes a new BG1, and you can have multiple BG1s open at the exact same time, utilizing the same bonding potential as long as you don't exceed that, I think, you've got...
What's that, a million?
25 million and we're at about 21 million. So you've got 4 million that you could go and open the next BG1 there right now, or...
But that would come off the 46 million that was originally stated. So unless things change, you can say that the final phase of the high school is, is a done deal unless something changes. So we're saying by approving this tonight, the final phase that the high school is what we're going to do. With the caveat that not necessarily. It can be changed. But I don't know whether I can send a message that we're going to do, spend all that, all the money allocated on one place and ignore the needs of the other buildings in the district. And that's the problem I'm having. I, I just can't justify in my mind that if it, nothing changes from the way it is at this present time, passing this and then down the line when money comes available, passing it to do the next phase and the next phase, then all money's going to be spent in one spot. The other schools that are already old and growing old are going to be left out or with a... A very small amount of money is comparatively spent on them. And they'll have to take a Band-Aid and do the best we can. So that's, that's the problem I'm having. I'm not against getting the money, spending the money, doing, doing projects that need doing. But I do have a problem with leaving out a section of the 3/4 suburb or 4/5 suburb district in favor of 1F because there's always been a perception of somebody gets it all and the rest get left out. So in this, my humble opinion, in, under this scenario, yep, there's a whole lot more going to get left out than included in this. And I know they're all going to, all the children go to Garrett County, for the most part, that for some reason or other choose to go somewhere else or going to eventually go through the high school. But eventually, it's somewhere down the road. And right now, it's what you've got to locate it where they are and what the schools' needs are now, what they're going to be two, three, four, five years down the road. Because even with the funds, additional funds, it's not even going to be bonded. It's not going to be sufficient to do one decent, one big job, which would be Lancaster Elementary's sorry. So that's, that's the problem.
All right, anybody else?
I don't.
I do have some, some things I'd like to say. I think that there is a history in our district of failing to follow the KDE's recommendations to do remodeling and renovation on our buildings. And I think you can validate that by looking at the two 30-year-old buildings, 30-plus-year-old buildings that we have in the district with many problems that we highlighted at the last board meeting. And I agree with Mike, and I said it last time too. We are following that same path or same trajectory to complete another bonding round and fail again to remodel and renovate our 30-plus-year-old schools. And I have a problem with that. And so I've said it multiple times, and I'll probably say it every time we meet and discuss building and the facilities because I feel like we are failing the students in those buildings and we are failing our community by not maintaining and renovating and remodeling on the schedule that the KDE recommends. And so that's a, at least a 30-year trajectory in this community of, that's just what we do. We don't remodel. We don't renovate. We just build new. We patch a Band-Aid and build new. And I have a problem with that. But that being said, I'd like to come back to this BG1 because I don't quite understand it. There was an item on last month's agenda that we tabled, and it was, it read possible approval of project priorities. So we, and it reads for renovations and new construction. So we made the decision to not renovate, but to fully use our bonding potential for new construction. Okay, so what has not happened is approving project priorities. As a board, we tabled that decision, and so now we're approving a BG1, and we don't yet know what order these items are in terms of priority. So my first, we, we know from looking at the bonding potential today that we could bond $25 million. This particular BG1 comes in at a total project cost of $21.3 million. And I look at the top under 1, 1A, and it includes, but is not limited to, a gymnasium, classroom resource rooms, athletic stadium, athletic fields, and associated support facilities. I don't know of that list, where are we going with this? And so this first line, total construction cost of $18.2 million. What is that $18.2 million going to be spent on?
Again, we wanted to file a BG1 that was within your bonding potential. What is going to happen is we'll bring packages to the board for approval, whether it be a schematic plan for gym, schematic plan for athletic facility, as we're, as we're doing that. So that's, I don't know how to say this. It's a, it's a shopping list, basically about projects that you have. This first BG1 gets us going with the Department of Education, gets things under contract so that whatever we submit to them can be approved by them, whatever the board approves. Approve a schematic plan for the athletic complex, that can go. You approve a schematic plan for the gym portion, that can go. So the board really has to direct us from what they're approving as we're, as we're going through the process of schematic plans to submit. I'm not bad in...
Well, I think the next item on the agenda is to approve a schematic design. And so I just feel like we have really failed to prioritize the projects that we have identified on the BG1. And so I feel like the most appropriate thing would, would be for us to back up and do that. And then we would know in what order we anticipate moving forward. So I, I just, I think that we're... Where, what, what are we approving this $18.2 million to be spent on? What's our priority project?
Tried to explain to you.
No, I fully understand what he explained. It includes the shopping list to get us started.
And according to our bonding potential, then we can pick and choose. Well, am I understanding this correctly? We can pick and choose at that time what is within that bonding potential. Then when our bonding potential increases, say in July, then we can add to that under this one BG1.
Under this BG1, that $18.2 is saying that anything listed on your DFP under 1A1, we're allocating the $18.2 million dollars to cover any of those projects. So that's the, I think you've got an auditorium listed on there. You've got a gymnasium listed on there. You've got classrooms listed on, anything under that 1A1A, you're saying we've got $18.2 million dollars to do projects under this category. You can increase that. If you, if we, when we present you schematic plans here shortly, you're going to see that those cost more than $18.2 million. But you only have a certain pot of money to get started. We're showing you the plans. So basically, you're taking to your banker, I'll go back to that analogy. You're going to your banker and saying, this is what I've got. And it opens your account with them. It opens your account with KDE so that they have paperwork that says they want to do a BG1. Now they can receive these drawings and start processing the paper. This is just paperwork. You're not spending $18.2 million dollars on anything tonight. You're just starting the process of the paperwork with KDE. You've still got tons of time to change your mind. You've got tons of time to add projects to, take projects away, start additional BG1s. We just have to start somewhere to stay on schedule if you want something open in the timeline that y'all express to us. So this is just a paperwork process at this point. Until we go to bid, no money has been spent other than to pay the folks that are doing the work for you at this point.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Just clarification. This BG1 would include the work preparation, the, the ground, the preparation for anything that happens at the high school because this is a BG1 for the high school. So this, so included in this $21 million would be the preparation of the land.
Yes. That's what it's letting us get started on.
So that's the first step.
Is the earthwork moving package.
And then we would make a decision on what's next. And then we would make a decision on what's next. Thank you.
Maybe I'm confused, it's easy to do, and don't wanna be confused, we wanna be exact on all this, and I thought in our last board meeting that we did vote to, to finish the high school project, and then at that particular point, we talked about the, uh, things that were needed at the other schools, and at that point, I thought that was the point that we was gonna talk about a priority list, and we look at and, and do those as we can do those, because obviously there's some projects that need to be done, and we need to give them, uh, you know, their appropriate attention, and so I was under the impression that we're on a one-time thing with the high school, we kinda use it or lose it type thing, and I think that obviously we need to, to max out in terms of the best, and I agree with Mike, and everybody on the ideas that we need to take and use the money the very best we possibly can, and try to provide as much of it as we possibly can, but at the same time, we don't need to lose an opportunity here, because when we talk about things, we built a new high school out there that was not complete, and it wasn't on, a fault of anybody other than the state of the economy, and so as an end result, when we get this one chance to, to, you know, bring that into reality, then I just feel like that is an opportunity we need for this community. With respect to the fact that as being acknowledged here, we need to maintain maintenance on the other schools as well.
Sure.
All right, all, we're ready to vote. All in favor of approving the BG1, let me know by the lifted hand. All opposed, the light sign, all right. Three more members, we're in favor, two more members who are not, the BG1 is approved. All right, item J is to approve schematic design for Garrett County High School final phase.
We'll turn that over to the architects. Thank you.
So, you should have a small paper copy in front of you, and then you had this on the screen as well.
I will have, which one are you doing first?
I'll start with the athletic complex. That's just more for me to be able to point at, because we're doing identifiers here. And, what we're bringing before you today is kind of this first blush, we call it schematic design through our process, and it's just what are the essential spaces that are needed? What kind of space do they take up? How's it gonna lay out? You've seen on the graphics before, some blocking out or some locations of where things are gonna go on the master plan, and this is starting to look at floor plan, so this is that first kinda, nobody has made edits from the district side, this is us coming to you with our initial thoughts. After the approval of this, and that we're kinda in the ballpark, having handled initial meetings with your folks, we'll move into what's called design development, and we've already, for March the third, we got a meeting on the books, where we'll start meeting with that high school staff to determine, especially those key players, the coaches and all that, what they need for their program, what do your particular program need, will this work for you? And we'll do that throughout the design development phase, but we've got two sets of drawings to show you tonight as part of our schematic design, you'll see the, uh, the football track, soccer, uh, complex, um, on, at first, and that comes with a two-thousand-seat uh, home side grandstand, five-hundred visitor seats, that's a reduction after talking with your staff. When we were initially, initially looking at this, we were looking at a twenty-five-hundred seat based on, um, your student occupancy, uh, we've been told that, you know, we can kinda reduce that down, we don't see that, we see that, but that, uh, excessive at this point, but we have left you the ability to continue to add on, if you need to add five-hundred or a thousand more seats sometime in the future as Garrett County continues to grow, there's room for that, so we're not boxing you in so that you couldn't do something later on. So, uh, from the grandstand aspect of it, it's a aluminum stand product, two-thousand seats, press box, uh, on one side, and then when you get into the floor plan, what we're looking at is we've got to deal with service concessions, restrooms, visitor locker, locker rooms, and then storage. So, in our initial meeting, kind of the brainstorming session we had, the first blush plan that we brought before your staff, we had dedicated locker rooms to every sport, and we started seeing how big and how expensive that was gonna become, uh, so that we started talking to the staff, who can share resources, what can we do to make this a more compact program so that it doesn't exceed the district's financial expectations. So, what we're looking at here, um, is a building that's split down the center, it's essentially serving as two separate smaller buildings that will allow you to funnel traffic through the grandstands, up at the field level, and into the stands, also gives you the ability, you know, students can run onto the field, gives you that kinda more, um, I wanna say UK football-ish type feel, that, you know, that hurrah a- atmosphere, um, but it also allows us to keep everything pretty compacted on the site, so that we're not wasting resources, wasting space getting you from point A to point B. Double game, uh, restrooms that are gonna serve all the spectators, a concession stand. Within that concession stand, we've got dedicated spaces for each of the teams that are gonna be servicing, so that their booster club can lock up their particular candy bars or their resources, so that they pull them out, we're selling concessions for a band tournament, we put those away, football pulls out their concessions, they sell their, uh, concessions, and it's safe and secure, there's no questions about who's doing what. Uh, we've also provided a first aid area that'll have act ice, it's just a way that if an athlete gets hurt, it's kind of a holding area until the ambulance can arrive, or if we need to just get someone out of the, uh, situation, you know, implement weather or something like that, and somebody has been hurt, we've got a weigh station for that. It serves as a spot for your officials to come in, you know, put their belongings down, change, use the restroom, go during halftime to, uh, do their, their meetings and take care of their necessities and needs. We're providing in the building, uh, on my right, your left, I suppose, I just took this right, um, we're providing a, the other side, the other building there, team storage. So, this is a larger room, meeting with the initial group of stakeholders, we knew that track, uh, soccer, uh, band, um, cross-country, all those athletes who are gonna use this athletic complex would need a place to store their equipment, so we've given one large kind of, uh, volume of space that'll have chain link cages essentially, ten by twelve, twelve by fifteen, that they can go in, lock and secure their equipment, but be able to pull it right out onto the field as they're using that facility. We're also providing laundry facilities for all the multiple teams to be able to get to and wash their uniforms, um, and then we're providing you a, just a general visitors' locker room, and that can be used by multiple sports, that can also be used as overflow if you're having tournaments and you need additional locker rooming space, it's there, but it's equipped, we have to look at this, our largest teams, tends to be a football team, those seventy players, we have to make spaces that can accommodate those, uh, number of, uh, athletes at one time. If you go to the other side of that building, you'll see our, uh, large restroom facilities, you'll see the large locker room, again, same situation there, um, can be used by multiple teams, multiple athletes, but it's sized to accommodate your largest athletic team, which is your football team, but it also provides, uh, access to a shared training room, taping room, uh, and then a multipurpose slash weight room, that was one of the early requests we had, is to be able to provide spaces where multiple athletes can come in and access that space, it's not just limited to any one given sport. If you'll scroll up, you should see the proximity that we have to your existing athletic building that sits out on the campus, and what we're looking at there, yeah, scroll along with, there we go. Um, in initial conversations we've had, that building currently, you'll see where I've got it identified as modified locker room, that wall or partition that's darkroom is a wall we've put in to make it of equal size to the corresponding locker room, so those are additional locker rooms for, um, your other athletes to utilize, but it then opens up a larger, again, multipurpose training facility for indoor, uh, weightlifting or indoor activities with very little modification to that existing building. As far as your outdoor athletics, what you're not seeing on here are baseball softball. Because of the type of construction, KDE does not require schematic design for dugouts and, uh, press box bleachers, which is the majority of what, uh, we have at baseball softball, other than the site improvement plan, which you've already approved, the, and the main reason you don't see a concession anywhere, that is one of those meetings we wanna have with your staff members, we're trying to figure out where we can locate an additional shared restroom and concession stand that would service tennis, baseball, and softball, so giving each their own individual little location that would cost more, so what we're looking at and proposing is doing an addition off the back of this existing building, about a twenty-foot addition, that would include additional restrooms and concessions that would be facing and servicing baseball, softball, and tennis, all right there in this complex. So, the baseball field, the tennis would slide about twenty foot, and we'd put an addition on the back of this building. So, we've gotta have that meeting with them as part of our third, and that'll be wrapped into our design development phase. Um, not everything goes into schematic design, some things go in and come out, some things that aren't there go on as we go into design development, and that's one of the key things. We've not had that meeting yet, but we wanna go ahead and get the drawing started, you know, KDE process started, knowing that changes are gonna happen really up until bid day, that we're gonna be making adjustments to this overall process. We'll flip, any questions on that complex as you see it thus far? I think, again, you know, we're not really concerned, having concern ourselves about finishes and, and, uh, what the building's overall appearance, those are final touches we're not working at this point, we're really just trying to get a plan laid out. So, when we flip around and we look at the performance gymnasium, what we're looking at there, um, all the way back to our initial interview, um, it was brought to the attention that y'all were looking for somewhere in the three-thousand-seat plus range, and it would accommodate essentially putting all of your graduating class on the floor, and then allowing them about three guests per person to sit in the stands. So, we, we kind of have held tight to that, we're able to accommodate, um, thirty-three-hundredths seats in this, this configuration. It gives you, um, locker room facilities for three sports plus a visitors locker room, so we're not at this point identifying male, female, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, they're the exact same, locker room is locker room, um, the athletes can choose, or the coaches can choose where they want to go, how y'all want to assign, we're not making them unique or different, so that way when you have a girls' basketball tournament, you now have three locker rooms you can utilize for that, for three different visiting teams, there's no distinguishable factor between them, uh, which we found was key, be able to service as many things as we can within this facility, and it not be like, I can't put my girls in the boys' locker room, it's a locker room, um, just like the classrooms, we don't own that kind of space. They each come with their own laundering facilities, coach's office, coach's facilities, which are KDE requirements. The game floor, uh, is pretty standard, it provides you the traditional playing surface plus the, uh, the ability to run volleyball, and have a primary volleyball tournament court, to additional stanchions we provide, to additional stanchion stands we provide, so you can run up to three volleyball courts if all the seating was pulled in. We can play your traditional tournament game, but if you wanted to practice, you've got the six goes that'll fold down from the ceiling. We've got, um, on the floor, we're looking at about sixteen hundred seats on the floor, and that's the two sides and the one end cap, and then the additional seating is up on that second level. The floor, the first big thing you'll notice is that big dark gray area. Brad came to me early on, you know, we're, we're bonded over our names, I guess, and he said, I really, it's, it's a struggle for us to put up a stage, take down a stage, just the, it's, it's just not functional every time the high school wants to have an event that requires a stage. So, we started looking early on at what kind of stage could we provide for a high school gymnasium of this size? Doesn't work to have, much like we would have at an elementary school that you may be familiar with, where the seating is all on one side, and they've got a built-in stage on the other side, um, that doesn't work for this type of environment, so our solution has been a retractable stage, and we're looking at two different options for that. We're studying those, meeting with the, the, um, equipment suppliers to determine which is gonna be the right fit for Garrett County. Um, one of the options we're looking at will fold up the wall and be in place, and the other works much like an orchestra pit that you would see, um, in a performance hall, where it will be in the floor in a pit, and it will just raise up. You'll put a curtain around the side, you'll roll out temporary, uh, stairs, temporary ramp, and you've got a stage, but then it is also just a playing surface. So, that's the one we're leaning towards, honestly, the costs are about the same. Would be no different than the elevator pit that we're putting in at the other end of the building, that will service the elevator that takes you up to the second level, so, and functionally, um, it's probably, it's leaning to be the more reliable solution. It's not something we've seen before, but it's really no different than the orchestra pit we installed in Allen Boyle County's Performing Center, it's just a hydraulic lift system, like a car lift, but on a much larger scale. Then, looking from there, if you go over, you'll see you've got your grand hall, um, this is, becomes the new entrance into the building, so you've got a front side entrance from there that could be utilized, but then you've got the main entrance that'll go out into the parking facilities, so if you're looking at the plan, we're about here, that set of doors at the top of the screen are about here, going out into the campus, and that just kinda bisects the, the existing building and the new building. And what that does by giving that buffer of space, it gives us a corridor that we can move people throughout, but it also lets you continue to have school while we're building right beside it. It gives us that buffer of space where the heavier, the larger mass of that whole project isn't right up against your existing building. And then off to the side, you'll see another game restroom that accommodates the gymnasium attendance that we're required to provide, and then you have this flexible learning classroom above that. This'll have the same kind of wood floor surface, is what we're imagining any of that gymnasium has, so this could be a space where the dance team comes and practices or the cheer team, but then it's also equipped with seating, it's gonna accommodate what future learning needs, you talk about future learning, one of the needs that's been addressed is that we can't get certain teachers, we can't get enough teachers, so this could be set up much like a collegiate level course, where I've got one teacher teaching ninety students in algebra instead of one teacher teaching thirty students at a time, but it also lets you be very flexible in what you're doing in that space. These'll be the same type of reclining or retracting seats that we have in a gymnasium, except for these'll be chairs with desks, some benches. Any questions thus far on this? You'll slide on over to that second level image. If you go upstairs in the main gym, what you're seeing there is additional seating that gets us up to our capacity that you've asked for, but they're retracting, uh, separately, so... so that we're able to get batting cages up there. That's batting cages or golf cages, you can use them for, or even archery, use them for multiple sports, but they're just going to drop out of the ceiling, the knotless netting that pull down all the ceilings. And then we've got an eighth or a mile long track that would go around that space. And that goes both sides, up and down the side. And it is the key reason we've provided an elevator. By code, we don't have to provide ADA accessibility up to those seats. There's nothing that says we have to. But having a track, having a facility like this, we want to be inclusive to all of your learners, whether they can walk or they have to be assisted in or it's equipment, so wheelchairs, crutches, whatever the need be, we've got accessibility of this. We can enjoy that space no matter how we learn and how we motivate ourselves around. Additional questions? You can go up, you can kind of see, again, we're not worrying so much about what the aesthetics of the building are at this point. We've got some concepts and some designs we're playing with. But you can kind of see how it plays in with the rest of the building. You can see in the far left of that image, that's the existing gymnasium with its hip roof. We've got that separation, that grand corridor and then the new building. Thoughts? Again, like I say, this is...
What's that, what's that just going to be for that track? I mean, what's the, what is the purpose of that track?
So it's going to give you, the track serves, or the track is just a, basically a no-cost add to servicing that additional seating. We can add the track up there and that's going to give students or, trying to think if it's appropriate to FMD students. I can now take my FMD student up there and we can go and we can exercise at the same time that athletic classes are happening down below. I'm included, you know? You know, there's just multiple, multiple opportunities. And it gives you your PE class, that's a course to go and run. How many miles, eight laps around, you've hit a mile.
Well, I guess that's something the community could use too.
We, we see that a lot of staff, school staff using those things.
Community people who's going to, who's going to, who's going to be watching, the community people while they're out there and who's going to let them in and out because those doors are going to be locked. So my wife wants to go out to high school and walk. How's she going to be digging? Mr. Anderson's going to have somebody to let them in and let them out?
That would be our responsibility to figure out, not theirs. They would be providing that. We would have to determine how we would go about doing that. It wouldn't necessarily have to fall from Mr. Anderson, it would be something that we have to look at at the district level to figure out how we might be able to accommodate that. It might be something that was available at certain times, but not at other times, not a universally available thing. Where if you go back to the previous schematic, you know, obviously you're anticipating that the community would be able to use that track outside as well in the better weather, you know, which we would think would hopefully be more frequent than the, than the bad weather, but you never know. So I think what you said that is important there is it's a, pretty much a no-cost add. It's just an advantage. So if our, if we have students who access it, that's number one. If we give it to somebody else and they have access to it, that's a, that's a benefit.
All right. Thank you, Tom President.
Brad, Mr. Doherty, you recommend this?
I am, sir.
You've heard Mr. Tensworth's recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve the schematic design for Garrett County High School final phase?
Show move.
All right, Mr. Tensworth, move. Going to have a second.
A second.
Ms. Davis, second. Any other comments? All in favor, let be known by lifting hand? Three more members were in favor, all opposed, two more members were not. The motion is carried. Item K is to approve contract agreement with Clough Feltzer-Sommer.
The folks from Clough Feltzer-Sommer-Cars shared a, a contract with us. We've shared it with your board attorney. The board attorney asked for a couple of items to be shared with him, with him that had not been shared. I asked Mr. Sommercar yesterday if he could make those adjustments. He did. So you now have a contract in front of you that is a typical contract from KDE, still requires KDE approval before it can go into effect. You have your board attorney who has approved it based on the adjustments that were requested. My recommendation is that you approve this based on the recommendation you see in front of you, please, that it's subject to KDE's approval of the BG1 and the contract. And when KDE does approve it, should they approve it, then you're authorizing the board chair to execute the contract so we don't have to wait to come back and do that again. So the motion is as printed, is the one that I would, that I would recommend to you.
All right, you've heard Mr. Tensworth's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Make your motion.
Mr. Tensworth made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis, second. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor, let be known by lifting hand? All board members were in favor, the contract with Sommer, Clough Feltzer-Sommer is approved. All right, item L is to approve a contract agreement with Trace Creek for construction management work on the Garrett County High School final phase.
So we fall into the, basically the exact same status that I just described to you a second ago. The only thing I can't tell you at this point that I, is I have not received back Grant's response to that, although I don't expect it to be an issue. That's not Trace Creek's issue whatsoever. So I can't tell you that Grant has said yes on that. I can tell you the same thing that I said a second ago, that is, it's a standard contract from KDE. None of our construction managers would have the opportunity to use a different contract. And my recommendation of approval of this one is the same as what you see there pending approval from Grant as well. So I would ask you to add that piece to it. Again, I don't anticipate an issue, but should it come back from him making a request to add something, I'm sure that they would be willing to do that. We'll ask them to update that before we ever give it back to Dr. Brown and for his approval and signature. It would still require KDE's approval of BG1 and the contract itself.
Y'all will be with it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, y'all understand? Or do I have a motion?
What?
Mr. Tensworth made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tensworth, second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, let be known by lifting hand? All board members were in favor. Item L is approved, which brings us to item six.
I make the motion.
Mr. Tensworth, any motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, let be known by lifting hand? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate you, all your input. Thank you for joining us on whatever, whatever. I always love to talk to you. Appreciate it.